As with notice, our meeting is pursuant to the open public hearing in Chapter 231 of the Department of Commerce's 75. This meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on May 15, 2018. It has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of May 18, 2018. All the municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the Regional High School District have been duly notified and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on May 15, 2018. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 11, 2019? Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. So, tonight is obviously the public hearing of the budget and I'll turn it over to Mr. Boyce momentarily. You know, a couple major threads to consider. Obviously, it's a bit of a paradox because I think what we've always prided ourselves in these public budget presentations are the efficiencies that we realize here in the Regional District. Low cost per pupil overall, high return on investment overall. Mr. Boyce, one year when we were using the HESPA, broke it down by, you know, what does it cost district per point on the HESPA? Like a fascinating way to look at it. And so, you know, how much do you spend in order to get this return on investment? And in all of those metrics, we're always at or near the top across comparable districts around the state. You know, we are always in the top two categories by every public financial metric possible. That said, that is juxtaposed with a looming financial crisis here in the district due to S2 and the reinterpretation of the distribution of state aid across the state. And folks who have been here have heard me discuss this, you know, over the past several months now. There's actually, the Senate budget hearing is tomorrow in Trenton. We'll be down there as well advocating for the Freehold Regional High School District. The long and the short of it is that, and Mr. Boyce has done a masterful job of putting this together to share with the public this evening, is we have been incredibly efficient. We feel strongly that the determination of local fair share is deeply flawed, highly problematic, and does not adequately represent the wealth in this district or what we should be required to put forth as a result of the reduction of state aid. And so, what that looks like for us over the next six years is $25 million in reductions, but if it looks two years out, is a huge first jump off of that financial cliff which Mr. Boyce will go through. What needs to be clear, though, is we are fortunate for the 2019-20 budget. This budget is intact, so there won't be those reductions. We are a year out from that timeline. So, Sean, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening and welcome to the fiscal outlook presentation for the Freehold Regional High School District. My name is Sean Boyce. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business. And tonight's presentation has purpose, twofold purpose. The first, a specific purpose, is to comply with the provisions of the New Jersey's school budget law that require a public hearing on any annual school budget. But there's also a broader purpose, and that is to understand the economic context that this budget or any budget falls into when looking at the overall financial structure and landscape and trajectory of the school district and how that's going to impact the decisions that we make in this budget and from here forward. The best starting point is going to be to take a look at school funding and get the lay of the land, and from there, that can be the backdrop for most of our conversation tonight. The central issue, the issue that school boards and superintendents and business administrators are talking about is a shift in school funding that is underway based on modifications to the Funding Formula legislation that occurred last summer. So, the Funding Formula, the states has a constitutional obligation to provide a thorough and efficient education. And every 10 to 15 years, the state revisits that Funding Formula and tweaks it or rewrites it entirely. The last time that that work happened was back in 2008, and there was a considerable amount of thought put into what was the best way to approach it. And that has been in place for the last decade or so, up until last summer, when there was some legislation passed to modernize the SFRA, the Funding Formula, and results in some significant shifts of funding from certain districts to other districts. So, this change and the Funding Formula in general really is the driver and everything else that has to do with finances in response to, in reaction to, changes made in school funding for school districts. That impact of that funding is felt both in the operating budget that we're putting together and presenting to you tonight, as well as capital planning, which is a longer view, but it's an important aspect of our overall financial condition. So, the SFRA, and it's fairly straightforward how they went about designing this. And so, from a design intent perspective, here's how they approach it. It's a two-step process. The first is to quantify student needs, and then the second step would be to determine how to pay for that. Quantifying student needs, a lot of work was done on developing a cost model, but what are the, without regard to dollars, what are the program services that students need in order to achieve a thorough and efficient education and be effective in adulthood? And the work that was done there is on the Department of Education website. It's an interesting read, but the takeaway here is that that cost model, and it's updated every two to three years and recently received a fairly significant update to properly represent the costs associated with the programs and services that the state has determined students need. But that cost model is uniformly applied to all districts across the state. And the way it's used is, it's applied to each district's specific demographic profile, student profile. And when you do that, what's generated is a single number called the adequacy budget, and that's going to be unique to each district. It's unique because no two districts have exactly the same student profile. So, by student profile, you know, high school kids cost more than elementary school kids. There's a basemount and then there are supplemental amounts assigned to students that are considered at-risk. That's a poverty-related term. Or English language learners or special education students, all of those are embedded in the cost model. In order to determine as accurately as any broad formula can, what the amount of money that is necessary for a district to deliver a thorough and efficient education, and that's represented by the adequacy budget on a district-by-district basis. The next component of it is to determine how to pay for it. And what the SFRA says is that, okay, so local fair share, which is property taxes, each community will pay according to their ability to pay, and the difference will be made up by state aid. So, local fair share, to determine the ability to pay on a district-by-district basis. The approach is to look at two wealth indicators for a community and then convert them into the ability to pay property taxes, using a multiplier, which is determined by the state in doing this conversion. And the multipliers have proven to be somewhat erratic over the years, and that, as it turns out, has a very significant impact on how the district approaches budgeting and providing for the things that we have here in the district right now. Let's take a look at what that is. The chart on the left, the multiplier growth, this is just in terms of pure numbers, changes in those multipliers that drive the district's ability to pay property taxes, their local fair share. And they've been, property more so than income, have been somewhat erratic over the years. And the impact has also been, the chart on the right is local fair share, the top line, the red line there is per the SFRA, as they see our wealth over time. The green line is, though, if the original multipliers were used, original as in the first year of the SFRA, which was fiscal year '09, that's what our local fair share would have been or would be right now if those multipliers didn't change. Let me bring this down into a micro example so that you have a sense of the impact of changing multipliers over these 10 years. In fiscal year '09, so in 2009, if a family lived in a home whose value, their market value was $300,000 and their household income was $100,000, the local fair share calculation would result in them being able to pay, their ability to pay property taxes would be $3,600, roughly. In 10 years later, in 2020, if their home was still valued at $300,000 and their household income was still $100,000, according to the formula today, their ability to pay property taxes would be $4,600. So, a $1,000 increase, yet no change in their wealth indicators. We have raised this question to the state, a number of districts have raised this question to the state, that we feel that not only are the multipliers, you know, unpredictable and erratic, but they also disproportionately affect property-heavy, residential property-heavy communities. Because as you can see, there's a 56% increase in their conversion factor for property with only a 9.6% increase in the income side. So now, let's take a look at the funding of adequacy, because remember, the two components that a school district, two main sources of revenue to run a school district are property taxes and state aid. And according to the Funding Formula, local fair share or property taxes pays first dollar up until their ability to pay or up until the total of their particular adequacy budget. And in that case, state aid would be zero, because the idea is that the two sources, the two green circles at the bottom of your page, between them have to fund the adequacy budget. So, on the left here, local fair share versus our tax levy, what has that really looked like? So, the top line is familiar from the previous slide. That is the curve of the state's interpretation of this community's ability to pay over time. The green line has been what our actual property tax levy has been. On the state aid side, the red is per the Funding Formula, what we should have received in state aid, and the green is what we did receive in state aid. So, a couple things to point out here. It should come as no surprise that under the SFRA, as the local fair share goes up on the left side, the state aid would go down, because the two of them together are trying to reach adequacy. And obviously, the more that the state can put into the local fair share column, the less difference there is for them to pick up. The reason that the state aid does not follow the dip that's reflected is that for a number of years here under the Christie administration, the Funding Formula was ignored, and the governor simply said, "Everybody gets what they got last year." So that's why we're looking at that flat green line across the state aid side. The difference between what we have been receiving per year and what we are eligible to receive is called adjustment aid. That's the terminology that the state uses, and that's the difference between the $46 million and $21 million. So, the general fund budget for Freehold Regional is approximately $200 million. $50 million or so we get from the state, and the rest is from local sources. So, the modernization modification to the Funding Formula, that piece of legislation that passed last summer, was looking to address adjustment aid for districts and to phase them out over a seven-year period. In other words, to bring state aid down to what the SFRA dictates. In other districts where there's tremendous enrollment growth, their red line for, per the SFRA, state aid goes in the other direction. So there are a number of districts out there that are receiving less state aid than they should, and then there are districts like Freehold Regional that are receiving more state aid than they should. So, a word about that. The message that has been sent out by the state and through the media for this modernization of the Funding Formula has been that districts like Freehold Regional are overfunded. So I just want to comment on that. What they really mean to say is that we are overaided. Overfunded sounds like they have too much money, they're spending too much money. That's not what they're saying. They're saying we're overaided, and really, the reason they're saying that is because they believe that Freehold Regional is undertaxed. Back to the left side of the screen, the local fair share, the state says your tax levy should be $166 million, not $137 million. So, what they're looking to do is close that gap and essentially shift the funding of Freehold Regional's adequacy budget from its current prorated amounts between the levy and state aid and shift funding from state aid to the property taxpayer. And, you know, our position on this has been, from the beginning, that, listen, we are willing to, as I think every community is, to pay our fair share. We take issue with the calculation of fair share and that the artificial increase in the multipliers used to convert wealth indicators into ability to pay has been manipulated in a way that raises the local fair share and suppresses the state's responsibility through state aid. Now, it hasn't mattered over the last several years, because the formula was never run, fully run, and districts received just the same amount that they got the year before. So it hasn't come to fruition until last summer, when the modernization legislation passed, it was called S2, Senate Bill 2, and put into play immediately last summer. Here's what that looks like. So, for the original budget for fiscal year 2019, which is the '18-'19 school year, the year we're currently in and coming to the close of, was $51 million. Once that year has started, S2 passed, and the district was notified that it was going to lose $1.3 million in aid. And then we received notice in March for the budget, the upcoming budget that is being proposed tonight, that we're going to lose another $3.8 million in aid. And you can see, according to the legislation, how this smooths out our current funding or recent funding of $51 million down to what they believe we should be receiving, which is $21 million. Now, that's a significant amount of money that's dropping off year after year, and there is not going to be an opportunity to respond to that through property taxes, because there is a separate and independent law that limits increasing property tax levy by, and the limit is 2% increase. So if you extrapolate this out, increases in property taxes cannot keep pace with reductions in state aid, which will then result into a markedly different set of programs and services available here at the district. So that's the SFRA, that's the Funding Formula, the lay of the land, and really something that has driven a lot of our strategic thinking and decisions we're making, both short-term and long-term, that are consistent with the strategic plan that the district has spent a lot of time and effort and thought in over recent years to decide what's the most targeted way to spend the available resources and that are in the best interest of our student programs. The annual school budget that is being proposed tonight for the board to vote on is summarized here on the revenue side. There's also a handout that has some more specific information, but the comparative general fund budget is really the best apples-to-apples view of an annual school budget. And you can see the drop-off in state aid and the increase in property taxes there. The other item of note would be fund balance, also known as surplus. And the district has managed its surplus in a way that preserves options and protects us from sudden abrupt changes in funding from the state level. The fiscal year '20 budget, as presented here, is an accelerated aggressive use of surplus that will, when combined with future years' loss in state aid, present significant challenges for the district. And in the short term, if we look at the projections for state aid decreases for the fiscal year '21 budget, 2% increase on the tax levy and the change in the available surplus, we're estimating to be $10 million, have $10 million less revenue than we currently have. Half of that because of state aid cuts and the other half due to changes in the local effort, which would include the tax levy and fund balance or surplus. There are two other funds here that are just part of the overall document. Special Revenue Fund is for grants and other restricted kind of revenues, and you can see comparatively at $3 million, it's a relatively small component of the overall budget. And then the Debt Service Fund at $5.5 million, that's payment of a long-term debt, and that's something we're going to circle back to. Think of this as, you know, your mortgage payments. So 20 years ago, the district issued bonds to get the funding to build Coltsneck High School and additions to other schools and things like that, and then are paying it back over time, similar to how we do it at home with our mortgage. So that's the revenue scenario. The budget is flat in a comparative apples-to-apples. There are no capital projects included in this budget, which is the Rowe Capital Reserve. We were able to put $4 million to take care of some building system needs in the current year, and we're doing that, but opportunities to do that have dissipated for a variety of reasons that we're covering here in this presentation in a little bit, and we'll talk about that. So, let me talk a little bit about the tax levy cap. There are some options to expand on the 2% increase maximum for school districts. There are few and far between. One mechanism available, and it's not an expansion of the 2%, but it's a deferral of a piece of the 2%, is called cap banking. So, the state, when they put forth this cap legislation, wanted to give school districts an opportunity to not go up to a 2% increase if they chose to, and allow them to bank some or all of that 2% for use in subsequent years. Over the years, what this slide shows is that the actual tax levy represented in green versus the maximum amount allowed if we were to use all dollars available to us every year. So the aggregate difference over this period of time is $30 million. Since the implementation of the 2% cap on the levy, this district has not levied $30 million that it was eligible to. So, we've tried to be responsive to the time, the economic times, make responsible choices throughout the last decade or so with regards to property tax levy. This budget being proposed tonight has a 2.5% increase, and the reason for that is that we are accessing some banked cap, so that was levy available last year, which was never put into place or never collected, and that's the extent of our bank cap. There is no further bank cap to go in future years, and the levy for the current year is a 2.5% increase. So how does that impact communities in particular? So Freehold Regional is a little unique with being a regional district, having a single tax levy, and then eight communities to break that down against. There are three pieces, three moving pieces that drive the percentage share allocation of the Freehold Regional's tax levy to these eight communities. This is the allocation methodology was imposed on the districts, was imposed when the district was first organized, has been in place since then, and it takes a look at how many students, both elementary and high school students, does a community have, and then splits the property value of that community and prorates the property value in accordance with the percentages of elementary versus high school students. So, things that could affect a community's percentage share of the regional levy, if their high school, number of students they had in high school went up, well, that's going to shift more of their property value and ultimately a higher percentage share of the levy to that community. Or if their elementary, their high school stayed the same and their elementary went down, again, that still impacts the prorating of property value and causes an increase in the percentage share for that community, or of course, an increase in their property value overall. But the thing that's difficult for... But the, the thing that's, that's difficult for the, the, the communities to, to understand is that there may not be no change whatsoever in your particular community, but changes in other of the eight communities could drive or could impact your percentage share. So there's more information online, I did a presentation on this, and I'll, I'll try and link this to that so that you can look at that a little closer. But as you can see, there are some ups and some downs, and therefore, all or some of those three reasons for those three moving parts of elementary enrollment, high school enrollment, and property value in your particular community, and all of that relative to the other seven communities that are part of the regional. So over time, what we've seen is abrupt changes in property taxes from year to year. We've made recommendations to the legislature over time, over the years, ideas on how we can smooth this process out, some things like rolling through your average versus such a, a specific adjustment on a year-by-year basis, which causes the peaks and valleys and the spikes of, of property taxes, and ups in some communities and downs in others. So that's something that we'll continue to press and we'll make progress to the extent that we are able. But overall, it is, it is equitable, fair and equitable, it's just not entirely that smooth. On the appropriation side, and again, in the handout, there's additional detail here, but the appropriation, appropriation side is fairly straightforward. There are no reductions in services or changes to programs. There is a reduction in staffing, a contraction due to declining enrollment. So each year for the last several years, we've gone down five to 10 teachers. Enrollment has been steadily declining, anywhere from 1% to 2%, 1.4 on average per year for the last five years or so. So, and we expect that to continue. So the, the, the byproduct of that is a contraction of staff, and that's reflected in, in this budget as well. As you can notice, there's, there's zero included in this budget for any capital improvements. The annual operating budget, under the current legislative environment and the budget law that's in place right now, an annual school budget does not provide districts with opportunities to take care of big-ticket facility improvements. And we're talking end-of-life, you know, roof replacements, HVAC, end-of-life equipment replaces, things like that, where the district has a, a track record, a long track record of being able to do that kind of thing within the confines of an annual school budget and, and, and not issue additional debt. Those opportunities are, are coming to a close. We recently finished up a, a large-scale energy savings improvement program, and what that allowed us to do was leverage future energy savings in order to get the funding necessary to replace end-of-life equipment, mostly HVAC equipment throughout the district, with highest, high-efficiency energy equipment that would then generate the savings that we were counting on to pay for it. All in all, it's a net-zero prospect financially, and we get to replace our equipment. So, and we were able to do that outside of issuing debt through the Debt Service Fund, issuing any bonds to that effect. But any reserves that the district has have been depleted. There's really no mechanism to replenish them because each budget is becoming so tight that there's not excess appropriations which can be set aside for future facility projects, something that has been available to districts in the past. Changes year over year. Salaries are, compensation in general is down 1.8 million, and employee benefits are up 1.8 million. Of course, there's shifting of funding, of funding other than that in accordance with our strategic plan, but the, the, the big movers would be those two salaries down and employee benefits up. Again, the handout supplemental to this presentation has some additional information, additional detail. So how do we stack up? And this is a, an argument that we've made with our legislators when addressing funding, is that, that Freel Regional is really built to provide, provide maximum opportunity for, for our students, any student that lives within our, our footprint. I mean, our spending has shown here, and this is the last audited financial information, actual spend information available. And, you know, we're at $14,027 for cost per pupil, and you can see the, the averages for all of the other components, remembering that high school students are the most expensive students. So as a high school-only district, you would expect us to be one of the higher bars here, but, but we're not. We're, you know, 15% lower than the other high school districts in, in the state, and there are 31 of us, high school-only districts altogether, but, but we're even outperforming, financially outperforming districts that, that have K-8 students as well, which we would expect them to be lower than us since those students cost less to educate at that level. We'll continue to make that case. We think districts like Freel Regional don't fit into the funding formula, and any broad funding formula, you're going to have outliers. It can't address district-specific circumstances in, in a, in a broad application of a, of a formula. We understand that, but we think there needs to be some release valves to consider and some path to a mechanism to access funding because of the uniqueness and, and the specific metrics that are achieved here by Freel Regional. So we're efficiently run, we have outstanding results, we have extensive opportunities with our, our magnet programs, full comprehensive high schools, and those are the types of things that are at risk should the state funding continue down the path that it's currently, currently going. So the other larger, the other piece of a larger economic context beyond this annual budget or annual budgets in general is the, is a referendum, which is, you know, a, a question put to the voters, and voters decide whether or not for a range of projects that they authorize a school district to issue bonds to get the funding to do those projects, and then pay it back through debt service, as I mentioned earlier, over the next 20 years. So the district went out for a referendum in October of 2018 unsuccessfully. It was a $40 million referendum, and it was for this, this group of work that you see on the slide here. The $40 million, we, we were also getting state support for that through debt service aid to the tune of about 30%. So view that as a 30% discount on the work. So that state funding would have paid for 40 mil, for 30% of that $40 million. And, you know, unfortunately, that, that wasn't passed, and we, we listened to the community since then, and we revisited our, the structure of our referendum question, and in March, the board took action to offer three questions in November on Election Day for the community's consideration. So question one are really those critical essential items that will, are going to happen whether the referendum passes or not. So if the referendum does not pass, these types of things will need to be funded through our annual operating budget, which is already going to be under significant stress because of state aid, state aid situations. We identified two other groups of projects or separated groups out from the original referendum into a question two and a question three for the community's consideration. The important thing to know here is that question two and question three's success is contingent on question one's success. So if one doesn't pass, two or three, even if they do pass at, at the polls, won't be put into play because they're contingent on one passing. So one is really the critical one, and there'll be a campaign to inform the community between now and November in a variety of ways, because we think that it really, and, and for the referendum, for state aid, for the entire district operation, the more the community knows, the better off the district is. We've, we've always believed that, and that's the, that's the approach that we're going to take with the referendum also. Pulling all of this together, if, if all three of these questions were to pass and state aid remained, or state funding for that remained at approximately 30%, the district would still see a reduction in property taxes. And the reason being that the, this upcoming year is the final payment of the existing debt. So that will be expiring, that's about $4 million in property taxes. We structured this originally, and again, here, to be a two-thirds, one-third split, so two-thirds reinvestment in the district facilities and one-third to allow the reduction in property taxes. So even if all of these were to pass, because of expiring debt and because we coordinated our efforts with that, you can still expect to see a property tax reduction. Even if all three of these were to pass, taxpayers have a seat at the table, and we felt that it was important that they're represented in those decisions as well. So where do we go from here? There are, before we can make decisions on what the impact on, on programs and services are going to be with the beginning in the 2020, 2021 budget, we need a couple of important pieces of information. We need to see how the referendum does in November, because if it's unsuccessful, then there's going to be components of that that need to be included in the annual budgets and which, which further crowds out space for programs that are, that are valued by this community. That's November, we'll know the answer to that. And then in March is the release of state aid numbers for the 2020, 2021 budget. We want to see what impact, you know, the, the legislative advocacy work that we have been doing, will continue to do. There's also legal action underway that we're part of with, with other districts challenging the constitutionality of, of this aid reduction and making our case of both legally, legislatively, from an advisory perspective, we're going, we will continue to pursue that, and we want to engage the community in joining the pursuit of that and press our elected officials to make what we think are, are more fair decisions with regard to the allocation of funding to school districts. But all along the way, the administrative team here will be formulating budget recommendations for, in preparation of any and all scenarios that we may encounter in designing the 2020, 2021 budget. And once those two critical pieces of information are received, we'll start having those conversations with the board and publicly about how the districts will need to be reshaped with, and there will be a, a pullback on what we're able to do right now. Perhaps do it in a different way, but there certainly will be a noticeable impact on the quality of the education that this community's grown accustomed to if a number of these factors fall into the wrong column. So that's the overall context, economic context of the district's financial position. The budget being put forward tonight does not include any reduction in programs, services. It's flat. We are, we have accelerated the use of our surplus, which creates additional challenges in the future, but it does allow us time to make real thoughtful decisions on how we're, we're going to change the district to conform with the resources available. It also affords us time to, to make our case through advocacy and, and legal action and hopefully change the direction of state funding in the future for Freel Regional High School District. So as always, please feel free to reach out to myself or, or the administrative team or the board if there's any questions or comments. We'll be happy to be very responsive to you and look forward to additional information regarding the referendum, which will start to come out once we get closer to the election date so that the, the information's as, as up to date and relevant as possible. Thank you.
I just want to, I just want to add a few things to your presentation, as always, it was excellent, clear, concise, and I think that your your, your ability to break down some real complex phenomena into terms that folks can easily understand is, is unsurpassed. Couple of things that I would add as, as points of emphasis. The, the term "overfunded" has been co-opted politically, and it's been co-opted by, you know, a gentleman in South Jersey who has an inordinate amount of power in this state. And it's a dangerous, it's a dangerous co-option because it, it, it implies that we are fiscally irresponsible, that we've been overfunded, and what have we done with it all these years? We should have been preparing for this. And when you look at our cost per pupil, and it's the lowest of, of any of those configurations, it tells you we have been responsible and we have been preparing, but what we cannot prepare for is a flawed structure that disproportionately impacts our communities at the expense of our children. And that's, that's where we have, and look at the political map and look at it, and look at whose harm. And that's all you need to do, and it's disgusting. The, the other piece on the adequacy budget, when I became superintendent here in 2010, 11, we were millions under adequacy. So this district was deemed to be spending less than what it should in the adequacy budget. Overnight, overnight, we went from millions under adequacy to millions over adequacy simply because they shifted the multipliers. And so we had been told, hey, you, you should be spending more, and then we were suddenly told we were spending, we weren't taxing enough, I should say taxed. The, the Manalapan English Town K-8 Regional is in the same situation. They went from under over adequacy overnight as well. In, as part of the lawsuit, we have tried to get at the way the state has determined this. You know, we started with an OPA that was denied, we've moved on to a subpoena, we're into court. The truth of the matter is that it's hacked up politically across the state, and folks get their hands into it and legislate in particular areas, all at the expense of, of children. And it goes, it goes to who has the political juice at the moment to get what they need or want. That is not an effective way to fund schools for children. The other piece that, that isn't even counted in this is, is the, the brokenness of the county vocational system here in Monmouth County in terms of its impact on districts like us. Want to be clear here, support all those opportunities for kids, not the way it is presently funded. When it's a county system and 60 some odd percent of the students at Biotech are Freel Regional students, that is a disproportionate impact financially to our system. When it costs us $5.5 million just for the high-end academies at Monmouth, that doesn't even get factored into this formula, that is a fundamentally flawed even get factored into this formula, that is a fundamentally flawed system. So there are, when the transportation, and I've said this numerous times, when a student attends a private school outside of the 20-mile radius, we're required to pay Aiden Lua to transport the student. Super voice, that's what, $880 some odd dollars a year, somewhere to that degree, right? So 884, right? So it's 884 that goes to the parents and says, we understand there's some transportation costs there. A student in our district that attends a county vocational school that's outside of that is not subject to those same principles. So it may cost us $9,000 to transport an individual student. That is a broken system in the county. My next stop, the Freeholders are the Board of Ed of the county system. The system is broken. You know, so when we're faced with $25 million in shortfalls, that is going to be a zero-sum game with what actions we take to protect the interests of this district for the 11,000 students here. So, Mr. Boyce, you know, I'll defer to the board, but thank you for taking the time with this. And behind the scenes, what Mr. Boyce does is also prepares a very detailed budget briefing book for the Board of Education that's usually provided a couple weeks in advance so that when we come here tonight, there aren't any mysteries about what this budget looks like. But I'll defer to the board members with questions.
If I could add to Mr. Sampson's, so first of all, I very much appreciate your candor in going up against the political issue at the hall. When you first started in the district during your intensive process, I asked you if politics played any significance in your attitude, but it does, and it's very important to show that you represent in some of the best interests of the students in the district. It's obviously going that. At the same time, you're representing taxpayers like me and the public, who are paying us a crowd, and we need to understand. So I greatly appreciate what you did. I know that you've exceeded, that exceedingly excelled in the professional sphere to figure out and clarify what this district, you're often the top line of the equation. And you can't have these cuts. And the bottom line is, it's very easy. There's fewer votes in the urban district, so a lot of politicians are going for that. And that's unfortunate. They should be looking at the lower cost and rewarding us for it. So that's my take on it. And with that, I would like to open the floor to any of the board members with any comments you may have.
So, Mr. Sampson acted a bit much about the political issue. So we're unique also in this district. We have three different groups of legislators that represent the town. So two out of the three voted no on the budget that cut our funding, but three of the legislators voted in favor of these budget cuts. And I wanted to know, since Bing Gopal is the state senate leader, not leader, but he's the state senator and voted for these cuts, what's the latest on what Bing Gopal and the two assemblymen from that district are doing about this?
Senator Gopal's office has introduced three specific pieces of legislation that would alleviate the financial impact to the Freehold Regional High School District. The first was to recognize the uniqueness of our district and to hold harmless districts that were a certain percentage under the state average per pupil and had over 10,000 students. So that applies directly to the Freehold Regional High School District. The second piece of legislation that was proposed was to extend the timeline for these reductions to, out to 10 years rather than seven, to at least in some capacity ameliorate the impact over time. The third piece of legislation was more specific to holding the values at a certain point statewide, correct Sean? I'm trying to remember the nuances of that. To hold the values related to, yeah, the multipliers at a specific, stable rate across the state. Where any, and so that's off the top of my head, but I think I've got it. But I think that the next question is then, you know, what legs, if any, do those pieces of legislation have and what might that look like? And that I cannot answer. What Mr. Boyce and I did, you know, probably a few months back now, is for all of the legislative officials that represent our communities and the local municipal officials as well, we prepared briefing packets to just send to explain the context of what's happening here, what that looks like. You know, our, the, our local legislators in our communities have been very supportive over all of our plight. There's a meeting with a number of us on May 8th with the Commissioner of Education. Where all of this goes, I don't, I don't know. You know, we've met with, you know, members of Governor Murphy's inner circle and made our case. Mr., Senator Gopal did arrange for a meeting for Mr. Boyce and I directly with Senator Sweeney. So that happened as well. We have, in all of these instances, prepared very clear and concise handouts that explain the dilemma around what we think are some of the deep flaws in the funding formula. Something has to give. What we keep coming at is that there were a number of districts that were not receiving the aid that they should over, for a number of years because they had exploding populations. And we're cognizant of that. We, you know, we fought side by side with some of those districts. One of them sends to us, Freehold Borough. However, it, to create the exact same situation for 100 other districts now going the other way is, you know, sort of the definition of madness. And that's the path we're on. I, I, I'm not sure, you know, oftentimes these, these legislation like S2 is deep and dense and thick and nuanced, and I don't know if folks fully appreciate the impact of what that might look like once that legislation comes to life long-term. And I think that that might have played a part in where we are today. But that's, you know, we have, the, the different legislators that represent us have all been very responsive to our request for time and information and meeting. Where it all goes is what, you know, is the great unknown.
Yeah, I would like to, as a member of the board, to roll with the conversation that we're seeing from the public. So, um...
Yes, just a quick comment. I mean, there's a lot of great takeaways every time you hear Mr. Boyce's presentation, but a couple of things that jumped out to me tonight, but I hope jump out to the public and perhaps the press, that you're seeing a lot of reporting about other districts somewhat similarly situated with a loss of state aid and their double-digit staff cuts, whatever you favor. We are having very few, very low deductions from staff members, perhaps, and none of those are due to any of the budget constraints that we face. And now those are just in the shape of their enrollment deduction. And I think that's huge. The other thing is, Mr. Boyce mentioned something about salaries. He can just, he said, buy one from May and basically wash now, and wash with the healthcare and everything. So that's, I thought those are two really important points that I just wanted to share with the board. Okay?
I'm still amazed when we see our cost per pupil personnel. It's just amazing we're around $8,000 to educate our kids. And that's incredible. And I tell you, I do read the Admiral Park Press in the morning, and I'm probably the only one in the area that still gets the paper delivered. But, and I got to tell you something, when I see what the other school districts are going through with their cuts, I mean, one school district did cut, they were cutting 80 staff members. So we're blessed that we don't have this scenario this time around. And you turn back the clock to our December board meeting where we didn't even have FaceTime with our politicians. And Mr. Boyce and Mrs. Sampson have, you really have had a lot of FaceTime with the politicians and with Mr. Sweeney, and you definitely are fighting the fight. And we'll just have to see what happens. I think you have to really kind of believe with all the work you're doing, something has to give. So, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. President. The regional is a leader in many ways. It's a religious setup here. The regional is also a leader in exposing at the core the fundamental unfairness of S2, which is expected to be fundamentally fair. And when a district that has traditionally, and I will say that our administration has become in many ways a voice and a face of exposing this unfairness towards the best interests of the students of the regional. But when there's an effort in S2 to force fundamental fairness and you see a district with lowest cost per pupil, which taxpayers benefit, students benefit unbelievably, being punished to no end, with no answer, the fundamental unfairness of the legislation itself, the funding formula itself is exposed. And I think the question to the legislature is to explain that, and there is not a fair and reasoned and understandable explanation. I think that is clear from the numbers tonight. Numbers don't lie. Mr. Boyce is a master of numbers. Our superintendent's a master of programming the curriculum and understanding how we fit within that. He's been clear, he's been a champion on this issue. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to it. But I'm sure there would be welcome any real answers being provided to the district and the students, and most of all, to all of you taxpayers and residents in the district. Those answers aren't forthcoming, they're not going to. Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Council. And with that said, any resident, please step up to the podium and give us your comments. All I ask is that you identify yourself and what this, or what county you come from. Are there any people to talk about the budget now? This is limited to the budget public.
is associated with employee benefits, and the primary player in there is health benefits. There are other things also, payroll tax, like pension, in a limited way, the state picks up pension for educators, anybody within the teacher pension, the annuity fund, which is the vast majority of our staff members. Workers' compensation insurance is also included in there. But that, that $35 million approximately, the primary player is health insurance. $30 million or so. The cost of, I'm sorry, 50% of what? No. No, 50%, it's a $200 million budget, so 50% would be $100 million health benefits, $35 million. But 100, over 100 million is compensation, so together they equal 145. 72% of our budget is people from those two categories, compensation and employee benefits. 35 out of 200. But your, your point is well taken. It's a significant player. It has seen aggressive increases over the years, and we're, you know, negotiating now and looking at again, you know, 7% to 9% increase in the cost of health benefits. All employees here participate in that cost under, it's known as chapter 78 of the law, but placed two years ago. It's a sliding scale depending on what your salary is and what percentage of the premium you pay. So employees participate in a share of those increases as well. In our meetings with Brown and Brown, who is our health broker, we've explored different funding mechanisms, which we, our current mechanism is fairly aggressive quasi-self-insurance, but not full self-insurance because of the risks associated with that. But we are looking at some more aggressive funding, those benefits, that doesn't change the level of benefit, that's, that goes through negotiations. But those are things that we endeavor to continue to do as long as the market conditions Other instructional programs? So it's five things. It's primarily athletics and extracurricular activities, but it's also our Raise Academy, which is a Twilight program in lieu of the typical school day. It's also our bilingual and basic skills program. So they're all direct instructional programs. So athletics and extracurricular activities are considered under the coding system as well.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion to approve item D3 adopted in 2009, 2020, I know this is a question. Oh, please.
And any questions that any member of the community present tonight or let me see this video. You know, I encourage you to reach out to me and to sit down, have a conversation because if you genuinely feel the more the community knows, the better off this district would be. I think it's also worth noting that, although I'm briefed in with Mr. Sampson on some of his advocacy stuff, I'm relentless and fearless of calling out what the situation is far more than I am. And I think the board's fortunate to have him, you know, put himself out front like that very consistently and in a very compelling way. And I thought that was worth noting.
And they seem to be step in line of what I saw Mike and Anthony.
Yes, I thought I wanted to ask a question. We talked about the tax rate that it's preliminary. So my question would be, what is the actual state where you know exactly what that tax rate is going to be? rate's gonna be? And between now and then, what's going on politically? Because Mr. Sampson, earlier, uh, this evening, you had told us that it was, um, what was the Senate Education Committee was having to test much.
Senate budget hearing.
So, like, what is that part of? Like, what's going on politically now between tomorrow and that day there, the final tax rate?
So, uh, well, I'll just handle the mechanics of it, uh, quickly. Um, taxes are not finalized by the local assessors until officially June, and that's in time for the, um, tax bills that are issued, first thing being in August. And, and at this point in that process, in April, um, the sort of current status of it that we receive from the local assessors is, is fairly, fairly good unless there's a large tax appeal settlement waiting to happen. So, but what might change tax rates? It's not changes in a community's assessment, but would be, um, perhaps increases in state aid, thereby lowering property taxes. The board chose to do that. Um, and so politically, um, I, I mean, Mr. Sampson certainly weigh in. Uh, I think it's, um, it's, uh, not likely that there'll be changes in state aid for the year being under consideration right now. Uh, but for future years, uh, I certainly, I certainly think there's some, um, some momentum in that direction.
I, I, I agree with that. You know, things can change. There's, you know, right now they're in the, the sort of throes of coming to agreement on the budget. And, uh, in New Jersey, that's, uh, that's a real, um, difficult process. And, and, you know, I'm not sure where that might go. I think tomorrow at the, uh, Senate budget hearing, you know, the, uh, Commissioner of Education, Dr. Rappellet, will be down there. Uh, they'll, they'll ask him a number of questions about this. And, you know, I'm sure that that, given the context of, uh, where some districts are, um, receiving increased aid and others are losing, that's gonna be a, a really pressurized environment. Um, I don't, it's late in the game for anything to change this year. Um, and I think that's why we've really, uh, focused our advocacy efforts on, on, you know, the, what, what's happening moving forward. There are districts out there though, um, you know, there are districts out there that have not had a declining enrollment, um, whose local fare share has shot up exponentially and who are laying off, you know, dozens of staff members even though their, their cost below. So there's, there, it, it's, it doesn't make sense at face value. And, um, you know, where all that, where all that, I was gonna use the expression horse trading, but, you know, there's, there's a hundred million dollars over the next five years dedicated to horse racing. So we can start right there. Um, you know, but I, I think if, if we, if we really dug into, um, you know, some of the processes of how the sausage is, is made, um, it would be an eye-opening experience.
Everybody done? Okay, let's move on again. May I have a motion to approve item G3, ATE3, adoption of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty annual school budget? Roll call, Sean. Oh, discussion. Any discussion? No? So roll call.
Mr. Bruno, Mrs. Cathyello, Mr. Rollo.
Yes.
Mrs. Bankhouser.
Yes.
Mrs. Slavitt.
Yes.
Your messenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Satera?
Yes.
Mr. Rascov.
Yes.
Has a time for board reports, and, uh, usually we call on each chairperson for board committee, which are curriculum instruction, finance, and policy. To my knowledge, they're on, uh, this, uh, for this meeting. So let's move forward to, uh, public, you know, participation. But first, Mr. Boyce, if there's any, anything, anything to be addressed, there are not. Okay, so let's move on to public participation. And we have, uh, that, that area.
The answer has been no every time you've come to the podium, and it's a misuse of the public podium. It's not a back and forth. The meeting can occur after if you want the answer. Again, I've answered you publicly, no, over and over again. And you are being incredibly disingenuous with what you present up there, sir.
Correct.
Not quite, you know, the. Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Yes. Uh, sir, get even. Uh, I understand you've raised this issue before, and the, uh, answer you've received before you received again tonight. So if you would please move on. Sir, you've received the answer. Please move on. Are you done? Thank you. Are there any other matters of public comment, Mr. President?
Yes, we do have one more. Uh, Jackson, who's, uh, who's, uh, now. Oh, okay. Can you say you're an elected official? Let me ask you a question that you pass. Very good. That's a good service. And be your own. Okay. Uh, may I have a motion to approve items G1 and G2? Discussion from anyone? No discussion. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Yes. Are there any members wishing to discuss old business? No? Okay, how about new business? Any members wishing to discuss new business? Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn please? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.